All right, this is a continuation of the 40B hearing of Route 18. However, before we get that, we have to take care of a previous matter. We received a request on 140 Laurel Street, the variance granted. Jerry, you want to read that letter?
Sure.
Into the record.
Attention Dorothy Simpson, zoning board of appeals, 175 Central Street, East Bridgewater, Massachusetts, RE extension of 140 Laurel Street variance. Dear Dorothy, please receive this as my client's request for an extension to the above referenced variance, a record copy of which I emailed to you on 11/21/24. My client is not asking for any changes, just a six-month extension. My understanding is the extension would take the new expiration date from January 10th, 2025 to July 10th, 2025. The reason for the request is that after the ZBA approval, the permitting process took quite some, took quite some time. We have not yet received the planning board's approval, although they approved us at their last hearing. If you should have any questions or need any further information, please feel free to contact me. Thank you, Robert Allegrini Esquire.
So two, obviously the permit took a while, and this is the company that came in and sold, but they still doing the same thing as that 47 had company and stuff. So they just didn't get their permit from the town in time, so they're just asking for six months' extension. I have a motion, motion made by Jerry Second by Greg, and all the favor. All right, that takes care of that. Now we're on two, what everyone's here for, the main show. It's just, so since that time, I received, well, with the board received it, just to me, but I'm gonna, I'll read it into the record. I received a letter from an interested citizen of the town. The reason I'm reading it in because letters don't show up. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to convey my take on last night's meeting at high school. I am James Anad on King Place, the guy that taught you in the hallway outside the Mandel. Just by accident. From what I got to mean, the people don't want this project 40B, and understand that it can't be stopped, but they want you to put as much, as a fight with all the tools you have. What I'm saying is this, I bet the people just like to hear you say, I'm gonna do everything with my power to draw this out and drag this on as long as possible, maybe develop a look elsewhere. Also, there is no way they will monitor the rental level of income, the state will override this once built, this is a tactic. There is also my belief that we can't trust the state to do what's best for our town somewhere, somehow. This will become a migrant housing or crime real area, I truly believe this. I also believe that the amount of kids come to school systems is too low, is too low, 88 people, where I believe the minimum 140 unit should expect 288 kids. The water company can't assure that the volume of Mr. Water needed will not damage infrastructure that's in place. The police chief said that he believes he can handle services at this location. The next breath, he was asked about the speeding on Highland Road. I believe he's, I believe, and he said he would send someone over there if the, if they had the resources, so I'm gonna read this word for word. So we don't have the resource to do speed check in that area, how can he do service calls there? I also don't believe that we can take the fire, police, school system, fire, police, school system, water, the POM, the DPW at their word. I believe it should be outsourced to an independent company. If we're doing all the kinds of study of this, we would need a specific study on the impact of the town's resources. The project 40B will increase our already high tax rate is inevitable. I just hope by giving a few homes for less rent than inviting, five strained resources are still in town, high taxes, infrastructure issues, when do we have a voice? We don't want to grow the town this way. Please help us stay in the fight for this small town. Thank you for your time. Jim, on the end, I hope I said your name right. So that sets it into the record. So do you have any updates on, from the development, developer side?
Sure. For the record, Peter Freeman, representing the applicant, across Little Hurley here, Jeff Mangini, project engineer, Merrill. So first, just asking you a question, forgive my bad memory, but were three person board?
We were, yes, so three, three votes, three votes, two others.
Yeah, because I see four and I just couldn't remember, so.
Yeah, we have a five, we're three, three votes.
So what, you know, there has been back and forth with the peer reviewers. What my suggestion is, is that we have Jeff present, because the traffic, I think, is really just about wrapped up, 100% wrapped up, and let him report, and if you're consulting to see her, obviously.
He is, he is. He has a little, he has a little hesitation after.
So that's what I would suggest, and after Jeff has done, is when we could go home and, you know, live his life again, and the money for weather, and then we turn to our Deb Keller on the civil, and she can report and tell about the back and forth, and then some, obviously, feedback also, and I think that would be, you know, the main discussion tonight, I think.
That makes sense.
The other thing about the past year, so that's okay, or can I let Jeff go ahead?
Jeff, when you can, just identify yourself, who you're with.
Right here is okay.
Yeah, well, that mic's, that's the only mic we got, and this is just.
No, no, that's just for cable.
That is. Does anyone, can everyone, can anyone just hear, can they hear my voice? You guys hear my voice? All right, just, you can either take this, or you can speak loud enough for the HBA, because that's what's, the cable mic, the little mic.
Just a little, not a problem with volume, but talk louder if you.
Yeah, as long as people can hear you.
Yeah. Members of the board, thank you this evening again. Jeff Mangini, senior project manager of Niche Engineering. So when we were here last in August, on August 6th, we had just received a peer review comment letter from Environmental Partners slash Apex. And when we were here last time, we had outlined to the board that we were going to provide additional data collection and responses based on their comments that we had received just prior to. So over the past few months, what Niche has been doing is collecting additional data and responding to the comments that Apex had given us back on August 6th. So Niche provided a, that material to Apex in the last few weeks, as long, as well as a comment letter that responded to some of the higher level comments. And a lot of the comments in there were deemed as to no further comment by Apex. A lot of them had to do with the data collection comparison. There was some discussion last time about collecting new data, since the data that we had collected before was done during September 2021, which understandably was done during the pandemic area timeframe, but it was commensurate with when we wanted to submit for this project. So we willingly went out and collected additional data and found that the data was very similar to what we collected in 2024 from 2021, be that some level of shift in peak hour traffic, modes of travel, or just population shift and things like that. So the, the traffic numbers were very similar, and were shown to not really impact the overall capacity analysis and impact of the project. What Apex also suggested was that we collect data at two additional locations. We had only really addressed the operations of the project site driveways, both on Route 18 and 14, I mean, excuse me, Route 18. So we did, we collected data at the Route 14 and Route 18 intersection north of the site, and the Route 18 and Highland Street intersection just south of the site. So we found that those, the intersection of Route 14 and Route 18 was actually reconstructed by Mass DOT quite recently, in the last five years. So some of the crash data that we looked at comparatively speaking in the last few years was done previous to when the intersection was reconstructed. We found that crashes since the intersection have been reconstructed better. As part of the Apex's response, they acknowledged that a lot of the crashes at that location included a lot of the adjacent driveways and not necessarily the intersection itself. As part of the Route 18 Highland intersection, understandably, there are some geometric challenges and operational challenges to that intersection. So we looked at that, and we found that Mass DOT is under guidance to reconstruct that intersection in the next few years. What Apex suggested is that the project team actively work with Mass DOT if there's any sort of modifications that we would need to make to be commensurate with the operation and geometric modifications to that location. Given that we're several hundred feet north of the intersection, without seeing the plans for Mass DOT, again, they're in their infancy stages, so we don't really know the extent of what they're planning. Let's say, for instance, if they were planning to run a sidewalk northward on Route 28 towards our site, we would want to make sure that our site was coordinated with whatever was happening with Mass DOT. But again, with those plans being sort of pre-25% at this point, we're designing our site driveway to be what the location, you know, presents itself currently. So a lot of the other, a lot of the other comments here, you know, were pretty, pretty basic. We also, in addition to the, responding to the comments back in August, we also presented a separate parking memo that compared some of the recently approved projects in towns surrounding here, and had similar size and similar style to the type of housing, and also compared that, that information to the Institute of Transportation Engineers parking generation, and found that the parking ratios compared to the number of units for our project is similar to what has been approved on other projects, and is also similar to the amount of parking that the Institute of Transportation Engineers suggests is the type number of parking spaces that would be generated for this type of development. So we provided our responses back on December 2nd. We didn't have any additional comments, or didn't require any sort of clarification on some of our responses. So at this time, we present that we don't have any additional questions, and feel that we have presented an adequate response to the Apex peer review letter and information at this time.
Okay. Do you want, want us to go to?
Sure.
Peer review?
I think it makes sense for the Environmental Partners.
Peer review, Dylan or?
Do you want to start with just traffic right now, or?
Yeah, why don't we, sorry, just traffic, because that's what he's sort of, he could, and then, is Jill?
Deb.
Deb, she'll come up next, so why don't do the traffic? Again, just identify yourself for the record.
Sure, absolutely.
Can I just, so, so for people that had them at the meetings, this gentleman, so they review the work that's done, they're hired by the town to check and double check. So, so could you introduce yourself and?
I'm Steve Chakoi, project engineer at Apex, formerly known as Environmental Partners. So the applicants, traffic engineer, they summed it up. As far as our comments, that what's left open are relatively minor. We know that they have issued a dissent letter in December 2nd, which we haven't fully reviewed yet, but we have taken a quick glance at it. It seems like they have provided more information on some items that we have requested clarification for. Those items are the crash data at the intersection to the north of the site that was studied on Route 18 at Auburn Street. And it was noted in the, in the study that there are a large number of crashes happened due to the adjacent drive, driveway, and we asked for some additional clarification on how they arrived at this conclusion, and they provided some backups in their recent submission. And regarding the trip distribution, we had asked for some clarification on their methodology. They provided some information, and it was mentioned about the bike competitive accommodations. They stated that the intersection to the South Highland Street is going to be reconstructed in 2029, so we asked that if there is any plan to extend any pedestrian bike accommodations northerly or close to the site, you know, there could be some connection with the site. And that's as far as our comments are concerned regarding the traffic itself. On the topic of parking, in their previous memo, their recent response, we had seen some discrepancies between the numbers that were given. We also asked for a breakdown of the comparable developments in the adjacent municipalities that they used to compare their providing parking events. And the rest of our comments are some items related to site plans, objective until later that we discuss.
Thank you. I got a question about, I don't know if it's you, so Wayside Farms across the street. I was the only one on that, I think that, were you on it?
I was an alternate.
That, they, they had a turn lane put in. Like, so when you're coming up Route 18, and you're going to Wayside Farm, there's a lane that dedicated to, I didn't see that anywhere. Is that something that we're looking at? No, because I, I think that might have been done because the state might have required that. So, I mean, we, we probably ask the state for, because that, I, I travel that every day, like maybe some, some other people do. And that actually is a big help, because if you drive in the morning, school buses turn into Wayside Farm, and they go into that lane where anybody turns right. So if you're going northbound, there's a, there's a lane, the road breaks out, there's a lane going right. It, it seems to make the flow go better, that's not something you're considering?
No.
Yeah, good idea, Steph.
Can I respond?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so as part of this project, Route 18 is part of Mass DOT's jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So as part of the approval of this project, we were to receive approval through this board, we would have to apply for a transportation access permit through Mass DOT, and they would have the opportunity to comment on things like lane width, and pedestrian ramps, and bicycle accommodations lighting, and things like that.
Well, we can, we, as a board, can certainly make strong recommendations to Mass DOT for that. I think, I think it makes sense, my own person, traveling every day. I, I don't, I know the advocate's taken this, but to me, it takes stuff.
Yeah, Mass DOT is gonna do what they.
Yes, I know, but we, my other suggestion is that we're gonna recommend, I think that the board.
Yeah, we're not gonna want, you know, as, we've designed these before, we're not gonna want to bus stop on Route 18, all our bus stops.
Oh, no, I understand, no, as I'm saying, no, that's why, that's why they have, the bus stop's not 18, the bus pulls over and gets a turn, it's like, it's almost like a turn lane. It's not as long as a normal turn lane, but it, it does let the flow of traffic continue.
So we have planned, we have planned Route 18, the site, for the bus to actually go into the site.
And you're a Wayside Farm too, you missed it.
Turn around and come out.
Right, but yeah, but what I'm suggesting to you is that, as a board member that sat on that one, it made a whole lot of sense to a lot of people, if, if you know, if you go up to Wayside Farm, you can see it, it's right across from your property. They have their right hand clearly.
I travel by that every day.
Yeah, so it makes a whole lot of sense, as I'm just suggesting, I know that we don't control Route 18 to some extent, cut out, you know, curves, cutouts and all that, but it's, I think it's a positive thing that.
And, and that's all I was gonna say, you hit the nail on the head, certain recommendations is your prerogative, but, you know, it still has to.
Oh, yeah, it has to be answered, yeah, I, I, yeah.
Can be a condition.
We're just, no, absolutely, but it can be a recommendation.
Yeah, the recommendation.
Yeah, absolutely, that's all I'm suggesting. And I just, I'm just putting in your head to think about it, because when you make your presentation to the state, I mean, because, right, this, this is just a step. Whether you get the approval here or not, this is just a step to, you have, you have a lot of other people to go sit. But traffic is a big thing that I know a lot of these people are concerned with, and so that's a lot of suggestions, it might make things easier if you consider it. All right, you all set?
Yes.
Can I?
Yes, Lynn, I'm sorry, anytime you can. She's a, she's a technical representative from the state.
Lynn Sweet, LDS Consulting Group, working as a technical assistant for Mass Housing Partnership for the town. So have you actually had a conversation with the school department about where they would prefer to see the buses turn in and turn out at this point? Because usually, they don't want to go onto private property because it's a liability issue. So the only reason I'm asking that is as you're finalizing your site plans, it's always a good idea to get some feedback.
Sure, yeah, for, all the 40Bs we've worked on, they do go onto the site, and, you know.
In this town?
Whatever 40Bs we've worked on, like the last one we worked on, Milton, they come right onto the site, but when the parking lot's turned around, it's safer that way. But we haven't had a, I don't know, did you, we haven't had a conversation yet, but we could review that with them.
Okay. And then, going back to the parking data, it's taken out, all of the collective, we did kind of really figure everything out. So the issue that I see is that 90% of your units are two and three-bedroom units, and only 10% are one-bedroom units. That's actually not the norm out in the marketplace. The norm has been now that up to 50% are one-bedroom. So the comparables that you use to compare your parking ratios are not really apples to apples, and no issue with phase one, no issue with phase four, but phases two and three only have 1.3. And I think, given that this is not a transit-oriented location, and that 90% of your units are larger units, that you might want to consider adding more spaces, even if you don't strike them, at least having a location where they can be striked, should you need them. So sometimes we, you know, designate an area, it gets whatever grassed over, but I do have some, some concerns, or I'd ask you to, you know, look back and, and find out what the unit mix at those other, other developments are. And I think it's, you know, for the good of everyone to take a second look at that down.
Certainly, you know, we can take a look. I know that, as Jeff reported, and your consulting concurred, that our numbers are indeed typical, and I'm certainly not attracted to here, but, you know, the parking requirements aren't typically driven by the number of bedrooms, because, you know, that presumes that they're distributed bedrooms. I'm not going to stop the snickering.
People, please, he, he, go ahead, Mr. Freeman.
So.
I can't hear him, just so you know.
Okay, that, that, let me know that, that's fine.
I can get that.
Yeah, don't snicker though and stuff, it's, it's.
Yeah. Do you need a microphone?
You want, no, Peter, this.
Be happy to.
This one?
Yes.
This was supposed to be at high school, but they.
We'll leave it to the experts, but my point is that I know that the statistics that was cited cover all types of units, and it's not typically driven by the number of bedrooms, that is the parking requirement. But we can certainly inquire, and one possible idea that Lynn mentioned is possible, we'll have to make sure on the site, but a lot of times it's called shadow parking, create possible future parking that's grassed over, but has, you know, the adequate, whatever is underneath it to support parking in the future, if it's needed. So, you know, we can certainly work with you on that, but from having done so many of these, I do believe that what we have already is okay, but possibly discussing shadow parking, we can look at that. Thanks.
You can leave that right there, Peter, so somebody, no, I have a table there. Yeah, because, you know, some of the comparables, which make a difference, are elderly housing. You know, I'm, I'm very familiar with the ones in Wayman, and two of them are elderly housing, so obviously you have limited, so again, I, so that's, Pope Tower is elderly housing, it's behind the old police station, and Colonial Village is elderly and handicap housing, it's next to the old Colonial rehab. The McQuell, the McElwain School Apartments is a very limited, it's a small building. You know, again, the only one that was comparable, and I am familiar with, is the Ledger, that's really the only one that's comparable, it's 300 units. The others are, you know, 50, and I guess, I guess the Lake Shore, that's the newer one, that's the newer one in Bridgewater. But when you have a 50-unit elderly housing, that's, you know, of course the parking's gonna be kind of skewed a little bit, that's all, just for, you know, references to what you've cited. But that, but I appreciate your, your input. So I think you're all set for now, you're gonna hang on a little bit in case. So, now, you're, you're, it's Deb, right? All right, sorry.
Your first.
Sorry to remember everybody's name.
Just in case, I'll grab the microphone.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Deb Keller with Merrill Engineers, and we're in Serviers, so civil engineer for the project. And as Jeff has stated, we have worked with Environmental Partners slash Apex through a couple of review comment letters, and as of recent, we responded December 4th to their latest one, so I'm, I'm sure we haven't had a chance to fully digest it.
Because I don't know that that was distributed.
They did, yeah.
Oh, they did? Okay, I don't understand the traffic one. Okay, sorry, keep going.
I'm sure it hasn't been fully digested yet, but I can do a brief summary as to what some of the changes are that through the review comments that we had back and forth. And I have a sort of an overall cover here for reference, starting with phase one. One of the questions was with regards to utilities and whether or not we would be providing gas or propane. This phase of the project will not have either gas or propane, it will be fully electric. Phases two, three, and four, which are on North Bedford Street, Route 18, will have, or we have proposed propane tanks for hot water only, all other utilities will be serviced through a water. And next, just starting, I'm gonna hop back onto phase one again, with regards to the drainage for the phase one portion of the project. Focus on the entryway, they asked us to look at the drainage there again, and see if we could capture more of the runoff from the proposed roadway, so what we have proposed is a trench drain, so that will run across the entire entrance, so that we can capture as much runoff from the proposed road as possible, treat it through some catch basin, pre-treatment unit, and a revised stormwater basin prior to discharge to the wetland. We also asked, they asked for us to further study the roadway crossing, where we have a wetland crossing, to make sure that that is, will be fully designed for all requirements, not only pre- and post-conditions, as well as some of the DPW stormwater requirements. So we have provided them with that secondary model, and as a result, to make sure that we could maintain all of those requirements and not alter the wetland in that area, we evaluated the up gradient wetland, making sure that that ponding elevation is equal to, or slightly less, basically it's equal, it matches pre- and post. So we're not either draining the wetland, or we're not flooding the wetland out, we're maintaining that existing condition for that wetland resource. The modification there was, we did have, of course, I can't remember now, it was either three or four two-foot diameter pipes going across for that crossing, we've converted it to three, four foot wide by two foot high, so the span doesn't need to be any higher, we just needed to spread it out a little bit farther, so that we could create that, maintain that existing condition throughout the wetland for that crossing. We did update some of the details with some minor updates to the drainage. One of the drainage basins at the end culvert, we raised up, so that we could confirm that we met groundwater separation to maintain the infiltration function of that basin. And then, for all of the phases, one of the comments, and I think this might be the primary comment of concern, was that we, we did previously ask for a waiver from the local stormwater requirements, and since we are in the taunton watershed, which there is some concerns with water quality, they would like us to meet the, the standards for one inch of impervious, one inch of runoff over the total impervious area is retained on site, that we meet a 90% TSS removal rate, which is water quality treatment for the property, as well as needing 60% treatment of phosphorus runoff from the property. So we prepared those calculations and have provided them in the, for the recent submittal, and that would include the entire project. Then, some of the remaining comments that were addressed were focused on phases two, three, and four. We do owe you a photometric plan, I got off the phone today with the lighting gentleman, he has told me that I will have those plans within a week, so hoping that we can get those over to you. We did update some of the parking counts, and for clarification, what we tried to do was identify all of the parking, and one of our parking tables was a comparison of what the bylaw or zoning requirement is for parking versus what was being proposed just for residential, so we excluded the loading spaces, et cetera. So I think that might have done where the confusion was in looking at that, so we labeled that, so it was clear that those were just residential parking, and the overall total parking number on each one of those sheets includes handicap, all of residential parking, and loading parking spaces, so that there's a total number of parking spaces as well. So we, we were asked to update some of the stormwater counts for those three phases as well, and in regards to, we had hand calculated some exfiltration function, and there is a, a nicer way of doing that in hydrocat models, so we, we took that out and replaced it, it didn't change much, but it's just an upgrade in, in the model, so we were able to do that for, for the study. And we did confirm, and I think this goes back to some of the site circulation comments of the traffic review letter, latest review letter had, was to confirm that we have a five-foot wide sidewalk at least every 200 feet for passing. Primarily, the sidewalk is a minimum of four feet, that does exclude the curb, so it's definitely four feet wide, that's the minimum sidewalk required. And then every, within 200 feet, some areas are less than 200 feet, but within 200 feet, there's always an area that's larger, at a minimum of five foot, five foot passing area. So that meets the sidewalk requirements. We did provide some additional truck turning movements. movements, in order to see both turning right and left coming out of the, uh, each one of the driveways, so those were added to the, um, submittal. As well as, on phase three, we reconfigured the parking layout so that we could move the accessible parking spaces closer to the, uh, building, which adjusted, and, um, I believe in this case, we did lose two parking spaces to do that, so that we made those accessible spaces closer to the front entrance. I, I, as far as, and the remaining comments were minor revisions, um, to the plans, details, making sure the outlet control structure matches what was in the model, et cetera. So, um, I will.
Yeah, Joe, you have a question?
Just a quick question, so the, the numbers that we got for parking based upon, you were talking about recalculations and everything else, is the 1.3 based upon the new number or is it different?
Should be the, the current numbers on the plan.
Yeah, we'll sort of coordinate with that, we can double check.
We can double check that, just to make sure.
All right, thank you.
Dylan, he's another one of the, uh, peer review for the town, uh, can you identify yourself, Dylan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for the record, Dylan O'Donnell with Apex, um, I'm the civil peer review engineer representing the town for this project. Um, so first off, I think Ms. Keller did a very good job, um, outlining our peer review as it stands to date. So just for the context of the audience, um, we have reviewed all phases of this project for conformance to the zoning bylaw, the subdivision regulations, the state stormwater regulations, um, the local stormwater reg- regulations and traffic. Um, so, getting into the comments themselves, so, just due to the sheer fact that there are, this is essentially four projects and one, we had a significant number of comments, um, but we have met with Ms. Keller and her team, and they have addressed many of the comments to date, there are still a good number of comments open, um, but many of them are technical in nature, and we have confidence that Ms. Keller, in her December 4th peer review letter, has, is well underway with addressing those comments. Um, I don't wanna repeat Ms. Keller too much here, but just to provide some context onto some of our specific comments here. So, with regards to stormwater, um, one of our main comments was the hydrology model and its impacts to wetlands, as Ms. Keller stated, we wanted the applicant to, to essentially, um, divide their hydrology model into two different parts, one to analyze the project's impact to wetlands, and one so that they can size the culverts under, um, the main road that they proposed through phase one. As Ms. Keller said, the location of the project, it's within the Taunton River watershed, and the Taunton River watershed is impaired, um, by nutrients including phosphorus. Um, so, re- recharging groundwater on site is very important to remove those nutrients and to not, um, and to not discharge those nutrients into the Taunton River watershed. So we have not reviewed the December 4th review, um, revised plans in detail yet, but my understanding is that the revised plans address our comment there. And then we'd also like to acknowledge that the comprehensive permit process streamlines the local permitting process by consolidating approvals under the jurisdiction of the zoning board appeals, um, but state permits are still required to be obtained, so because this is within the buffer to wetlands, it will still need to, this project will need to be heard by the conservation commission, um, since that is technically a state permit under the jurisdiction of Mass DDP. And I'd also like to acknowledge that on December 4th, my team had a meeting with Ms. Sweet, who's the, um, town's technical assistant, and there's a couple of other items that we didn't necessarily bring up in our letter that we would like to, um, discuss, and it might potentially be on our next letter. One is, one was EV parking, um, photometric plans, which I understand, based on Ms. Keller's response, will be received in the following week or so. Um, the central, any central mailbox system for the four phases, and then school bus pickup and drop-off, which I understand we might have, um, addressed briefly already. So with that, those are, that's a brief overview of the civil peer review to date, and if there's any comments by the board.
But could you explain what a photometric plan is?
Sure, sorry, a photometric plan is essentially just a lighting plan. Um, so you can see what are called foot candles, which is the level of light on the ground in front of the lights, just ensuring that the site is well lit, um, and a lot of the light, you know, we don't want light to, um, pass the property line, so to speak.
I just wanna make sure, you know, everyone knew what it was, it was referred to a couple of times.
Yep.
Does anybody on the board have any, uh, questions or any, uh, comments to Dylan? Lynn, do you have anything you wanna?
Um, the only other thing, and I, and I will totally admit that I, somehow I missed the last letter, so I'm gonna have to connect with, with Dorothy on that. Um, and I haven't studied those site plans in detail, but do you have, um, trash addressed? Like, are there dumpsters somewhere or is it being handled in the building? It's always a big kinda, you know, you gotta truck coming in and out.
If all of this, if the, the dumpster.
So they're on the plans already?
They're on the plan, yeah.
Perfect, um, and?
And they're fenced in, right?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
No, that's it, thank you, you did a great job.
Thank you, Dylan.
Thanks, Dawn.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Just a quick comment, um, I apologize, I forgot to mention that we are in the process of filing with conservation, so we're hoping in the next week or so, we will have that filing. I'll say.
Thank you very much, thanks, you can hang on a few minutes, just a please. So, the reason we have this is because you can see it's more than just us that are involved in this, we're, we're, we're the people that, you know, 40B is its, is its own animal, and, um, the only way to really get out of 40B is if you already have your 10% of threshold, and this town has 3.9%, so we don't have 10%. So, we're sort of, there's, there's state agencies that overlook these things, that's how they got here, they, they work for the state agency and they work with the selectmen, that's how they got here. Our role is just, is, is to, to address the zoning relief and some of those things you heard about, uh, the zoning, but they have to go to conservation, they have to go to the DOT, you probably have to go to planning board, or I think you're asking for a waiver on that, you, what are your papers?
Yeah.
Okay, could you ask for a waiver in here somewhere?
Yeah, I think the reason that's wrong with those three.
Yeah, but I understand, but the way you worded, oh, you're, oh, you're asking to be waived to, so you don't have to go for the, a subdivision approval, okay. Um, so, so the zoning is what's before us here, um, and I, and I don't know if you saw this, but they do give a breakdown, you had mentioned Lynn on some correspondence, they did give a breakdown of what relief they're seeking.
Well, I think that, you know, one thing I wanted to bring up, cause it obviously came up today, was that some of your waivers were very blanket in nature, like stormwater, and as we're moving further into the process and continue, you know, contemplating down the road, doing a decision, it might be helpful to get a revised waiver list, and I think that what, what we're used to seeing is you sort of have a column that says, you know, here's what the bylaw is, here's what exists today, here's what's being proposed, are you asking for a waiver? Right now, it's sort of kind of in a narrative form, so I, I, you know, um, and, and I think that would also make it much easier to translate that into, you know, a decision that the board can vote on as well.
And I would certainly hope to work on a draft, just to review what you drafted.
I, I can't hear.
A lot of our, a lot of our waivers are, as you said, general, but not tonight, but we'll go over them to the new consultants, uh, some of the floodplain related things may not be applicable to the, and likewise, stormwater, uh, local bylaws, for my management, you're right, it's general, but as Deb said, we believe if you comply with it now, we'll wanna have the back and forth with these folks, but if they're in agreement, then, you know, we certainly would just withdraw that waiver request, so we'll go over that and, you know, change that, discuss it, et cetera.
Thank you.
And that would be, uh, that, that would be another peer review with you guys, to go over the different things. They started the notation here somewhere that you're not in a floodplain, it's no, I saw that, it's no longer, I think I saw, it's no longer required.
Right.
Okay, all right, so, um, does anybody on the board have any questions for, for the individuals that are before us? Be it the applicant's agent, or, or our own consultants, or anybody who need any more further information from Lynn?
I don't know.
So, you know, it's a public hearing, so, all right, the public needs to stay on topic, but you're more than welcome, you raise your hand, I'll acknowledge you, um, if you have any questions or what you're studying. Uh, huh? Yeah, you have to give your name. So, so this, uh, and I, and, uh, Mr. Freeman, let me ask you before we go, because, um, our timeline right now ends January 5th, but, uh, my understanding is, the reason I wanna do this, cause I want people to know we're coming back again, my understanding is you're gonna, you've agreed to, to have the request for at least 30 days from that date?
Uh, just about, I mean, Rob's here, um, we, I heard from, excuse me, from Lynn that there are two tentative dates in January.
Yep.
Um, we certainly know there'll have to be one more hearing, if there needs to be two, hey, we were hoping to fit it in in January, if that's impossible, then, you know, 30 days would be February 5th, which is up to you, Rob, but that's just about the same. So, I don't know if you could possibly have two hearings in January.
Well, uh, no, yeah, because we're having trouble getting one place, we actually have to pick a date tonight, because, again, like, tonight we could, even though we had the school first, we got bumped, uh, and they've already told us one of the dates is no good, so we're trying to pick by the date. Uh, and also, I will, I will be out of state on February 5th, but I will be back for February 12th, I don't know about the other board members, but I'm letting you know that I'll be out of those.
February 12th. Oh, I've got that in there.
So February 12th, if we can discuss that, is available, so the plan would be, um, the board would have to decide, we have to pick either the 15th, but that's outside, so we would need a written request, um, you know, to, to, that you agree to extend it, again.
Okay, whatever we agree on, I'll follow, I'd absolutely follow up and go that.
Yeah, so, so I'm, I'm suggesting that it be, I'm suggesting it be 45 days, that way it gets the 12th in there.
So maybe through February 14th?
Uh, Mr., Ms. Freeman, I'm suggesting that we go 45 days, cause that would get the 12th in there, February.
Okay.
And, and then you'll have your information, hopefully maybe back from the conservation commission.
So, what Rob would like to do is give an extension through January, we can set the date, if it has to be just one date, that's fine, and we will always talk with you, I know you will ask if you think you need more time, but I do think there's a strong likelihood that it can be wrapped up and the hearing closed in January, and then there is still the time to work on a decision, uh, hopefully drafted Friday then, but you do have time to deliberate, you know, you don't necessarily have to have the vote, I mean, we'd love to have it all wrapped up, but, you know, I understand your constraints and apparently in terms of logistics, but that's where we're at at this point, so.
I mean, I, I have to say, Peter, that my concern for the board is, in, is that this is, um, what, 100, 220 unit?
Yeah, this is four, this is four projects.
This is four projects and working, working on a decision, um, you know, we know next meeting, we at least need to finish the peer reviews, and we at least need to go over the waiver list that we haven't done yet, so I don't think that in January, we're gonna be ready to look at a decision, and I think that most of the time when we're involved in these, we at least keep the public o- public hearing open to go through the decision, and this decision is gonna be a bear, you know, um, because you've got four, you know, four different sites in it. So, you know, just as far as like managing expectations, you know, the hope would be that at that February meeting, they would be able to go through all the different conditions, close the hearing, and potentially even, you know, potentially even, but, you know, vote that night, but I, I, I fear closing, closing the hearing in January and then not being able to talk about, about the, um, the conditions in.
In public.
In, in public, just cause it's a lot.
I, I have to defer to my client, and I'm not saying that I disagree with them, and I do respect the board, but it also has, it also has, you know, there were, for whatever reason, it's water under the bridge, but there, there were some, you know, fairly large hiatus, and, um, what, what I would say, just by way of discussion, um, if there's an indication which is not a guarantee, that we can have, you know, a decision done in February, then it becomes less of a real issue as to whether the hearing is still open or the hearing is closed. I'd still prefer to address that with you at the January hearing, but I do think, um, and I, that's because I understand what Lynn's saying, I don't think it's gonna be that hard to draft a decision, I've drafted many similar decisions, uh, and there are a lot of details for sure, but in any event, if there can be, I would call it a kind of good faith pledge that, you know, we will start working in January on a decision, and that a hearing, if it's a hearing as opposed to just a deliberation, but that you make every effort to have the decision done in February, then it's kind of a win-win for everybody, so.
No, I, I think that, I, 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 I'm not speaking for the whole board, but I don't think that's possible. Um, I, I think that it's not unreasonable, and again, it's up to your client, and I understand that, Peter, but it's not unreasonable to say, we're here on December, and, and the reason that the hiatus, cause we didn't have all the information, the, the, everyone had to get together, the peer group, um, so, I don't think, I don't think, it's, I don't think a good faith guarantee should be given, I don't think we should bind ourselves. Uh, if, if your client chooses not to, uh, today, extend till, you know, I'm talking 45 days, cause that can get the February 12th meeting in, that we have, tell, we have a place, then that's fine, that's up to, that's up to your client, and we'll look at that come January and, and, you know, if, 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 because I don't think a decision, one way or the other, can be drafted in that timeframe. But it's up, you know, it's up to you, and I mean, I'm doing it now because I'm gonna let the, I'm gonna let the people speak, cause they know we're coming back, and then more issues gonna be done with actually what they're seeking from the zoning board.
I appreciate the discussion, so, um, yes, we, I'll send a letter tomorrow extending the hearing until February 12th, I'm not asking for a response now, cause I hear what you said, I, I didn't mean it to make it.
No, no, I understand.
What I, maybe it's more of a, maybe it's more of a good faith pledge from Lynn, that I will work on a decision, we've done it before together, and if we, so, so, again, the best of both worlds for us, it, it may well be possible that at the hearing in February, we will also go over a decision, and that doesn't bind you, cause statu- not statutorily, but by the regulate, actually it is the statute, but, um, you know, if necessary, you do have time after that, but a, just a good faith indication, and we'll do our best, the larger part of that is on me, you know, to help Lynn draft it. So that, that would be fine, I'll send the letter tomorrow extending the 180 days through a hearing on February 12th.
Yeah, so, so, we, so, just so you know now, we've got, the meeting's definitely gonna be February 12th, we are gonna have a January one, we have a side tonight, so here's the two choices. January 8th would be at the high school, if we do it at the high school, and the 15th, the 15th would have to be here.
Right. I can make, I can make January 8th, I thought, January 8th, I thought it was January.
No, the 6th is a Monday, it'll be the 8th.
Six.
No, the 5th is the deadline, it's a Sunday.
Right.
That's the deadline that we, which moves to the 6th, so.
What were the two January dates you were?
8th or 15th.
8th or 15th.
Okay, 8th or 15th?
I prefer the 8th, that just means it's a new one, it's one more week if it's not the new one.
And, I mean, I've got a hearing in Sherburne, so I'm on the 15th.
That's fine, now, everyone, I mean, obviously, we all have to, you know, we got people going away for business, and so.
Yeah, I don't know why.
It's, it's, for the board's purposes, the 8th, fine, everybody.
8 works.
Okay.
And that's at the high school.
Oh, that's at the high school.
So, we're gonna, we're not gonna close the meeting, we're not gonna, I mean, we're not gonna end tonight, we're gonna, in a second, but just so everyone knows, the next meeting, in which I believe we'll go over actually what they're actually seeking. Oh, uh, Dylan, is the 8th okay with you guys?
I'll have to double check.
Well, we're gonna, we'll keep the 8th, cause we don't, I mean, we're gonna go over like some of the zoning stuff that they're, that they can specially, so, um, we'll keep the 8th, maybe you can send somebody, or, you know, if you, so, uh, and the 8th works, Peter, for you?
Right.
So the 8th is gonna be at the high school, January 8th, 7 o'clock at the high school. We're gonna set the February meeting, that's February 12th, and that's at the high school. Right, no, that's here.
That's here.
February 12th, the meeting will be here.
Okay.
This is more intimate than the high school, I didn't even know they had any people at the meeting last time, it's all spread out. Um, so everyone's got those days. No, no decision is being done tonight.
I know.
No chance.
12, you at 7:00?
Yes, I'm sorry, 7:00 PM.
We talked about snow down here.
Well, you know what, let's cross that bridge when we get snow, we get 60-degree weather today, so we're not gonna worry about snow.
I'll take snow over the 60 today, 60 mile an hour.
Winds, right, they're gonna come over the bridge, I understand, I, I, I worried about, I flooded up today, but someone told me you'd make it like a trouper you are. Um, so, I, I, I will not, uh, refrain from people from the camp, it's an open meeting, if anyone wants to comment to what we heard tonight, but it needs to be what we're doing tonight, the, the more, the zoning matters will be more taken up next week, as you can see, they have to go to the conservation, did you say it's scheduled?
No, I said we'll be filing within a week.
All right, so, for people who, uh, are tech savvy, I think that they posted, I, I don't know this, but I think they posted on our website, the conservation, so if you, cause that's, that takes environmental stuff and whatnot, uh, it's also, all these meetings are posted at town hall and the. It's also, all these meetings are posted at town hall and the, at the bulletin board, as you go into town hall to the right, there's a bulletin board of all the town, they have to post them with a certain time, at least 48 hours before. So you, if you check with anybody, see when the conservation and the meeting is, and, and I'm guessing, it's not going to be until January. So that, you know, again, you know, I, I don't know if it's going to be before our next meeting, I hope it is. But I don't know because actually the holidays now take up the next couple of Wednesdays. And the schools, and the schools itself is closed until January 6th, I think. So I. Yeah, yeah, where is he? I see Charlie here, right, Town Administrator?
Yes.
Do you have any, Charlie Seelig is our Town Administrator. Do you have any comments while you've seen tonight or what you want to comment on? Oh, yeah, stand up, Charlie, and maybe come up, use the mic. So tonight we heard like, sort of like the engineer stuff from about that town and whatnot. The next meeting is going to be more like the zoning stuff.
What I was asked about, in terms of that being asked coming in, I was in terms of the revenues that make the drive.
That might break there, well, that might pick up the cable, but that was, the crowd will hear you.
For the project, so there will be receiving revenues from a few sources. One is, the, the project for the apartments will be hooked into the sewer system. We're receiving as part of those connection fees, 1,258,850 dollars. Half of that, 629,425 has already been received. We'll receive the other half in three phases, 209,808 dollars for Phase 2, which is the first 40-unit apartment. Another 298,888 for Phase 3, for the 40-unit apartment. And then another 209,808 for Phase 4, which would be the additional 80 units. All that money, of course, is going to, not the general fund, not for town services, but to help build the sanitary sources and the connection of Rockton. We'll also get building inspection fees. I'm not sure which schedule this will fall under, whether it's residential, commercial. But at the minimum, my guess is if we're doing 240 units, 75 cents per square foot, with 240 units, we should get at least 180,000 dollars. But of course, that's one-time revenue, it's not revenue that we'll see every year. So you don't rely on that when you're putting together an operating budget. Property taxes, we valued, obviously, it's a projection at this point, since nothing's been built yet. But when we were looking at the sanitary sewer project and trying to value how much we would receive in property taxes, the assessor came up with a figure of 68 million dollars for the value of the project. Current tax rate for fiscal '25 is $13.67. That would derive 929,560 dollars. And that would, of course, be every year. That's what I was asked to, those numbers were what I was asked to bring in.
Thank you.
Also would be revenue from, from cars as well?
I would assume so, I don't think we've ever estimated because, you know, you'd have to make a projection as to.
Yeah, how many parking spaces, yeah.
Well, how many cars, the age of the cars, basically, you would take, okay, you're going to make an assumption about how many cars you're going to have as part of the project. We'll look at the actual X-size bills for vehicles in town, take an average, multiply one by the other, and you can come up with that.
Thank you. Given the time, does, does anybody have any questions or legitimate issues that they want to raise tonight or save them till the next meeting? This is where we get kind of a, I, I stress that we're a voluntary board here, the fire, Mr. Mashen can make it. This is where we kind of get weekly to read, and we all have jobs and families, so these things are in great detail. So I don't know if anyone, you know, I, I'm not going to cut you off. Ah, yes, could you identify yourself, please?
I'm Nancy DeChambeau, Route 18, East Bridgewater. I'm just concerned about all the more traffic we're going to have, how many cars will we going to have? I mean, we're already a bottleneck in this town. I don't think we really need, and how many garbage trucks are going to be going there? Is it going to be daily, weekly, or, because now when the garbage trucks do go by on Route 18, they're left, the manhole cover's at least three to four inches down, and the banging going down Route 18 for all these big trucks with garbage and everything else is really bad.
It bangs on Central Street too, right outside my house, and I've called the town, so I understand it.
Yeah, I've called the state and all they do is laugh at you. But you're going to be, how many garbage trucks are going to be going up Route 18 to go empty garbage for these places?
Well, let me see if we can answer first, do, when you're traffic study, you do an impact of the car, like the, how would you impact traffic?
Yeah, that's what I'm looking at now, just to verify the question.
And could you, can you answer the second part, like, what's the rubbish pick up weekly?
Just as a customary subdivision, it'll be once a week.
Yeah, okay.
And then if it's requiring more for the subdivision, it's an on-call, the management company will call, but it'd be once a week.
It's going to be standard once a week, like our town rubbish?
One truck, once a week, that I call help.
Well, I don't know how many trucks, but one, their, their rubbish service would be like our town stuff. It's going to be once a week unless management companies, we, management company calls and say, we have an overflow for whatever. I mean, in my office, I do it once a week, and if it's necessary, I call them. Because we also have apartments near my office, I call them.
Well, how many trucks would there be?
Well, I assume it's the company you're going to hire, they're going to go to the dumpsters, I presume, right?
One truck?
One truck to the 40, 40.
Just like, just like any other.
And this is done in phases, if I, if I read correctly, this last phase is like close to 2030, 2029, am I correct? Like, it's like the first phase takes 30 months to complete, then the other, the next one takes 18 months, 18 months, 18 months, that's what. So we're talking five years before even.
The base project.
Yeah, yeah. All right, any other questions about what you heard tonight, the traffic?
What day is he doing the traffic studies on?
Which one?
What day is he doing the traffic studies on?
Oh, we don't have.
Monday, Friday, that's what we're doing on the road.
All right, you have to identify yourself.
I'm June New, on Street.
So when we collected the data, we purposely waited until school was back in session. So we counted in September from a Tuesday through a Thursday, which is typical because we don't want to count on Mondays and Fridays when people work them all in the daytime off. So Tuesday through Thursday is the accepted standard for weekday. Saturday, usually if we do a full day or we do a good day, people call from 11 to 2, which is.
Well, you've got to get rush out.
Yeah, yeah, that's part of what we want to assess as part of the.
People work them all Monday and Friday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
No Mondays or Fridays, unless we were doing like a week-long.
And on the subway too, the traffic giving you.
Yeah.
Yes, identify yourself, please.
Mary Walsh, Northridge Drive. I'm not sure if anyone has ever driven down Winter Street and Beaver Road, Beaver Street. You can't pass there, you can't, two cars have to go very slow to go next to each other. There's no way that you put in duplexes, 80 duplexes right there, and you can't tell me that traffic isn't going to increase there. There's no sidewalks, there is no, like, no little white line, you can't see the line, white line. Me and my kids go riding bikes down there, and everyone has to stop so that they can go around me. No one can pass each other. There's no way you can put that monstrosity coming down that street. I don't understand the traffic study, I don't know how anyone could say that the traffic in 2021 is the same as the traffic in 2024. Because I lived there that full time, it has increased dramatically, off of 14, going down Alder, all, all around there.
This traffic study, just for reference, this traffic was done this September, they had to redo a new one?
I know they did.
Oh, okay.
What I'm saying is there's no way that they said at the beginning that the traffic study that they just did in September, that the numbers are no different from when they were during COVID in 2021. I drive that street every single day, multiple times a day, and there's no passing, there's no way you can go by there. You're about to clip any tree, telephone pole, everything, there's, there's no way you can put there, pass two cars there. Also, the heaves, I'm not sure if you've ever been down there, they are always digging up because there's always pipes bursting into Whitman. Maybe it's not on East Bridgewater's record because it's on the Whitman side. But those bumps there are always disrupted because of the wetlands and because of the water.
All right, let me ask a question. Lynn, do you, I don't know if, I had, do they have to, for, for like over Winter Street, that's a town road, do they have to go to the highway department and all to deal with that?
So Winter Street is.
Yeah, it's a town road.
In, in East Bridgewater.
Yeah, we, we, we actually did a, it was posted, we went out to the site, and I, I, yeah, we had to. We probably parked on somebody's lawn.
I was going to say, it was, it was daylight today.
You cannot walk down there without getting hit.
That's why, that's why I'm curious, because I don't see anything about the, the town highway department, because would they have to go to them with the, about the road?
Well, I mean, if they're going to do any.
Well, they got to cut into it.
Yeah, if they're going to cut into the road, then they are going to have to deal with the highway department. If there are, in, in, you know, if there are issues, you know, sometimes problems get fixed that are, you know, that are existing when people start doing construction.
Again.
I'm not going to, you know, I'm not going to, it's good to raise the issues.
One at a time.
It's good to raise the issues, and certainly, you know, I would start with calling, you know, the, the DPW for the town about your concerns about the road, but.
Oh, I, I'm sorry, when you say the problems get fixed, do you mean like putting sidewalks on there? So like that, you can, it would like the increased traffic coming in?
I, I, I will readily admit I have not studied these site plans. I, I believe within the sites that there are going to be sidewalks, I don't know what there are on the public ways.
This is the entrance into it.
That's what we're talking about, that's what I'm not talking about, what you're talking about.
And then there's going to be an entrance on the other side on Winter, which is a side road, which does not have sidewalks, it's like the road is the smallest road in all of East Bridgewater and around here. I don't think I've been on a smaller road.
We went to where we first walked in.
We, we went, we went to where that proposed cut out was.
And so you're aware of what?
Yeah, the board, and actually, the board members, and somebody from the planning board came, it was public, nobody showed up, but it was, it was a rainy day like this. But we went at 10 o'clock on a Saturday, it was posted, the applicant was there, I think one of his engineers might have been there, and we, oh, I'm aware of the street, I mean, I've looked at 35 years.
So, but, so I guess, my question is.
That's why I'm asking if the highway department gets involved with this, because the, the road setup real, I, I don't see what you're saying, but I don't, I don't know if we have any, we don't have any say over Winter Street.
Well, there shouldn't be an entrance.
We don't have any say over Winter Street, but anyone is always welcome to call them, I don't know.
Yeah, I suggest you.
But that shouldn't be an entrance.
Sometimes what happens is there's, there's more public way than what's been paved. So it's possible around the site entrance, I mean, I, I think the developer could speak to.
This was brought, if I could just.
Yes, you may, identify yourself, please. Identify yourself.
Can you stand up?
Can you stand up? Can you stand up so they can hear?
Thank you.
Thanks.
Rob Silvery, the developer. So this was brought up in our first meeting, and we went to the site.
Yeah.
So Winter Street is 24 feet wide, so it's standard width for roadways for town, East Bridgewater, and most towns as well. So the issue with Winter Street, probably for a couple of miles, the trees haven't been trimmed, forcing vehicles to go in the middle. And we brought this up in our first meeting, it was addressed in our first meeting. We had the engineers fully verified to make sure it's not like a 12 or 18 or smaller, but it is a full, full width. And in our plans, we show that we're going to trim the entire width of my property line, pull it back. So it's not only the trees overgroove to the, you know, the potential right of ways, the trees, trees and branches are on the roadway, so that's an issue. That's just pushing the vehicles to the.
All right, we couldn't park, when we went down there, we, we had to park on the house, say where the houses were, because we got scratched with the trees and stuff.
So the other, the other question was, typically, when you do, we do subdivisions, and DPW is going to require, we'll do a, we'll, we do all the tie-ins for the utilities. We'll pave curb to curb all the way to the other side, but in regards to potholes and such for Winter Street, that's going to be DPW.
You, again?
Yeah, so I guess my point, I understand like inside the development will have curbs and sidewalks and all that. But where, you're putting an entrance on that road, and that road cannot handle just two vehicles passing each other. Like you said, you parked, you parked on someone's lawn, I know you did.
Pretty much, sure, I guess I did.
There's no space, so that's why I'm saying, how can you put an entrance there? Like, I understand on 18, that's not, I mean, it's too big, but you're, and you, as you were saying, like, there should be a pull-out lane for an entrance on 18. There's no way, this is a side street, it's a small neighborhood, okay, there's just one cul-de-sac down there. I don't understand how you can put an entrance there when you can't even fit sidewalks on that road.
I, I really think, and now we won't have to contact, but I really think they should contact the highway department because, like, like you know, we parked on where the houses side.
But I'm not building this, so.
But, but, but the road itself, whether they build it or not, the road already is, is too narrow, it's what you're saying.
But the entrance shouldn't be there, it doesn't need an entrance there.
It handles the additional traffic.
That's what I'm saying, that's the point, the entrance, there should only be one entrance. It's, you can't do it on that little road.
I, I didn't say, I see what you, I didn't see what you're saying, no.
Yeah, it should only be one entrance.
Yeah, I mean, what we, what we can do is we can try to get Mr. Haynes also at the next meeting. He's, he's a DPW commissioner?
Yeah, one entrance, right on there.
Yeah, but I'm telling you, but he, he's the DPW commissioner that handles those roads, so he can give us some more insight. I, you know, I agree the roads now, there, we went down that.
Yeah, and you're going to put 80 duplexes coming in on that side, plus whoever decides to enter from that side that is going to the apartments.
There's no road, there's no road through to the apartments, you can't cut through. The plan does not, the plan, you know, you can't, you can't cut through from Winter Street to Route 18.
Okay.
There's not going to be a cut through, just so you know, that's, that's something that we talked about a long time ago, and they don't, they're not requesting it.
Uh, not now. I'm just saying, there's plenty of undeveloped land.
Yeah, right, but they're not, they're not requesting it from us, we can only do what's before us. I know what you're saying, that five years from now, who, who knows?
Yeah, okay.
I would have finished 35 years on this board, so everybody would be done by then. Did you, were you guys, something to show us, something?
I was going to have, I was going to have her show the existing conditions to show that the trees, that tree line is grown in, and needs to come out.
If you want, if you want to do that, go ahead, and then when the tierless gentleman.
I, I know the tree line, that's not, it's just the width of the actual road. I, like I said, I drive down it every single day. It's the width of the actual cemented road, you cannot walk on there, there's no sidewalks, there's no pullover, there's nothing. It just doesn't warrant a second entrance from that area. It can't handle that. And I don't know what, whatever traffic study you did, it can't, can't handle that. You can't park and park it. I don't know how you could possibly say we could have 80 duplexes coming over that side, and no big, no big deal.
How, how, why is, how, why is it proposed entryway? Do you have it up there?
Yeah, yeah, 18 and 14, but they didn't do anything.
Go, 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 I said.
No, that's it, right, to that entrance, so that would be the entrance. So it's a, and how, and how?
Forty feet.
A 40, 40 feet entrance and an out.
The entryway, the entryway, it could be wide as a street.
I, so.
Yeah, one, one at a time, no, you know, you can finish your thought.
No, I'm not talking about the entrance into the development, I'm talking about Winter Street itself. Having the traffic of 80 duplexes, your 1.3 cars that you're estimating, which is really like two to three cars, but fine. But coming down that street all day, every day, where you have bus stops, you have kids standing outside where they cannot stand on a sidewalk. They're, they're sitting, standing on their front lawn, and now you're increasing all the people coming in and out of this area on a side road. Very dangerous, very dangerous.
So you, yeah, identify yourself, please.
Sure, Rob is saying the South Street. I'll do you one better, I walk my dog here every.
Oh, good luck to you, sir.
Yeah, and two big pickup trucks passing through that road is really scary. Now, I walk facing the traffic, so I know what's coming at me, I don't walk, trust something behind me. But that road, that Winter Street road is, I, I don't know where the, the 24 feet come from, but I took a garden spike, luckily, stuck it into the edge of the tire, and I hit no resistance, and stuck it in, did the same thing on the other side. And there's a cove right there with a little string, and it's only 22 feet, not 24. So this, this, that road does make a lot, by the old dairy farm, you get 24, 25 feet. When you go down the other way, the telephone poles seem to be like 15 to 10 inches, inches, away from the road. So it's, it's pretty tight there, and my dog and I keep an eye out for all those pickup trucks. So you watch your step on us, my dog doesn't care. But I don't see how that's going to make it as far as traffic goes, I'll put up the DPW, making some width adjustments.
Never mind the trucks going in and out.
Yeah, you, you, when you speak, you got to, when you speak, you got to. Yeah, you, you, when you speak, you gotta, when you speak, you gotta identify yourself. It's just the rules of the...
Wait, 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 wait.
Yep, Lynn.
So, with regard to the construction vehicles, um, there probably could be a discussion about where the construction vehicles are turning in or turning out. I, I don't, I don't know if, you know...
So, we, we, again, we did, we discussed this in the first meeting. We have a TNP plan. All vehicles coming from within Route fourteen, Route eighteen, fourteen that way. No vehicles coming down Winter Street.
Somebody had a hand raised back there. I, I...
And just, just to, you know, to follow that up, that's gonna actually be in the decision, so that it will be enforceable, so, um, it sounds like it has been thought, thought about.
That's true, but the Winter Street has a ruler-shot curve where it has to summer street.
Yes.
It's really dangerous in that section.
Way in the back, uh, corner, my, yeah, identify yourself.
Tom Hiddings, here on Washington Street. Uh, I, after the last meeting, I drove that road. And this town has to be prepared to redo that whole road and bring it up to code. That's gonna cost you money. I really think you need to think this through. I really don't care about construction equipment. It can't work there either. But regular cars are already a problem. The road's already in disrepair. So, the town's gonna have to look at what it's gonna cost to replace that entire road, bring it to the right code, and make it safe before you consider this. I, I urge you to...
Does the town have like a road repair schedule where they do so many roads every year?
Well, they, they happen. I don't know if this is on the list or not, like, they've recently done...
I mean, they've got a lot of...
They've recently done like, uh, West, not West Union, Union, some of Maple Land they recently did, uh, that little road run.
Right. There's some budgeted each year, but obviously you don't have enough money to do...
But we don't know what, we don't know what's next on the list.
Well, if, if you, if you're able to bring the DPW director to the next meeting...
I would advise everybody, if they don't call the DPW, you show up next meeting, and we'll get somebody here from DPW. I don't know who will. Uh, you know, if Mr. Haynes can't make it, they do have a separate, somebody who's head of highway. Like, he's the commissioner of DPW, and then you have somebody head of highway. So, maybe we, we can, we can, uh...
Yeah, yeah, we'll try to get John.
And like I said, I've also traveled the road. I, I understand the analysis of it. I mean, driving my kids over there when they're going to, you know, their buddy's house or something. And, and I think whoever made the comment, I think that the gentleman with the dog walker, that turn is kinda, you come up, you know, you come up, uh, the street there, and you make that turn around.
Yeah, cap.
Both sides.
Yeah.
Both sides on the Winter Street turn.
Yep.
Um, all right, so, uh, yes, sir?
Uh, Mr. Ferrielli on Sonic Drive. Are we discussing just the forty B tonight?
What else? This is what we have, what else were you here for?
Oh, I mean, are we talking about just the eighty units? Or are we talking about the two-hundred and forty...
No, the forty, so, so the forty B, this is, this is, the forty B is the two-hundred and forty units. Phase one is the first phase. That's what they're, that's what they're working on for it. But we're not, we're, we're talking about, this is the forty B here. The question that'll come up has to do with, that just came up, is now, when they discussed, when the, when the two-engine, you know, side engineers discussed it, they were discussing the whole project. You heard them go, you heard them reference phase one, phase two, phase three, phase four. Phase one is the first part of this. So, a lot of times, this might be a four application, because it's four different phases. But this was presented to us by the applicant and by the town. They get, they went to the highs up than us before they came here, and presented it as one application. So, the forty B is what we're talking about. And this is why we're, we're getting, you know, this is why they're going back and forth, our town engineer and their engineers. Um, and this is why we have Ms. Sweet here. She's, she's, she was, um, through the, the state has an assistance program, a technical assistance program for, um, forty B programs. So, we're talking about the whole thing. The issue right now was sort of focusing on traffic overall. And, and that, um, young lady brought it up, 'cause she lives over by there, the Winter Street issue, which, which I agree with her is a problem, because we all live in town, we all know how the Winter Street situation is.
So, the, the polls, are those plans up there? Are the polls include the two-hundred and forty units?
That plan...
Or is this one section?
That's an overall picture.
The whole, the whole project.
It's the cover for the phase one, but it does show, this is, this is phase one here, which has its entrance off of Winter Street.
How many units in there?
Eighty total, yes.
Eighty units in there?
And those are units to be purchased, correct?
Yes.
And then there are three phases here, which are the four forty unit buildings that are off of, uh, Route eighteen, North Federal Street.
Now, I got another question concerning the trash we're talking about. When you have a, a development like this, does one trash company do all, or do the people that are chosen?
Well, no, the management, so the, so the front, the Route eighteen stuff for apartments. So, I presume that the owner, the owner's gonna have a management company, and they hire a rubbish company, whether it be troop or whoever, like the town here hired, I don't know who we have anymore. But I see people like with the, the, like, some people, like, my next door neighbor has different pals than me, 'cause he privately hires somebody. But they'll have one company, I, I presume, work on the apartments. He's not, I, I doubt they're gonna have three different companies coming to trash.
So, forty B regulations require all the, all the apartments or condos, whatever town houses, to be professionally managed by professional companies.
And they would, and they would hire the rubbish company.
So, they're gonna turn, hire a trash company two, uh, once a week to pick up the trash. And that, that management company is monitoring trash and other things, maintenance and stuff.
The reason I ask you is, on Summit Drive, like, fifteen houses, there's three trash companies. Every day, or three days in a row, there's this big trash company coming down the street. I wonder if we're gonna get three.
Well, that's, well, that's, well, they could have three on Winter Street now, because the town allows you to opt out and hire your own company. So, Summit Street is a, is a residential street, correct?
Summit Drive.
Summit Drive, I mean, it's a residential. So, so people on that street have decided they either wanna use the town program, or they wanna hire their own rubbish service. Maybe it's cheaper. So, that's why you're getting, because you're allowed to do that. So, that's why you get three different companies.
So, these people wouldn't be allowed to do that?
No, it would be up to the management company to see, I, I presume, if, you know, if you're in business, you wanna get the best deal you can. I presume that they would use one company.
That the condo will have a company, the apartments will have a company. Chances are, they could be the same company, 'cause the condo is managed by a condo association, and part of the condo association's job is to take care of the trash. The apartments are managed by an apartment management company, again. They are in charge of taking care of the trash. So, there won't be someone hiring their own separate company.
Like we do now in town, as a residential. You can hire whoever you want to remove your rubbish, or you can take it to the dumpster at work.
There is a possibility of two companies.
For, 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 for the separate projects, because one of them, so one rubbish service will be used at the townhouses, which is phase one. It might be the same company, you don't know. But the condo association is, is, is run by a board trustees, like in any condo association, and they oversee. And then the apartments with, with separate drive, with separate entryways, now on eighteen, they're run by a management company. So, one could hire a great republic, and the other could hire waste management, but there'd only be one company serving each locale. Yes, can you identify yourself in terms of...
Yeah, here's for a shady cap's way, so, a few quick questions. I agree with you totally on Winter Street. That's disaster. The problem is you have three different towns there. You've got Whitman on one end, Rockland on the other, you've got East Bridgewater in the middle. Being on Cap's Way, driving that road literally every single day, you can't turn into Cap's Way. You can't see traffic coming the other way. So, it's already a nightmare to begin with, and with the increased traffic. My issue is that there's gonna be increased rate vaccines over there. And I would disagree that the road is, uh, uniform twenty-four feet all across that. It's just, I, I've walked the street, I've ridden it on the street, and there's a lot of issues here in the street. As far as the trash goes, and I'll just, on the condo association, is the condo association bound that they can only use one company of their choice? Or the condo association, the trustees, gonna be able to have a vote and maybe change that at some point down there? Where they can say, okay, you know what, it costs us, I'll make it up a number of...
Yeah.
A thousand dollars a month, if everyone here, they say, you're cheaper, do you do it? And I see kind of like smirking over there, but having been a trustee on a, at a condo association, there's a lot of things that happen, and things can change, depending on who trustee, who the trustees are, and how much, uh, control they have over the...
Right, and, and, and that's, and that's exactly what you said. Condo associations control that. So, when condo docs, as you know, you were a condo owner, condo docs are made, they set the rules and regulations of the condos, including trustees' powers, and...
And they can be changed.
Yeah, oh, yeah, by a vote, absolutely. I, I, again, so, so, um...
It's, it's without the, it's, it's beyond the board's power to tell, to, to write into the decision. What's what the condo should, should, should or shouldn't do.
So, I'm just, what I'm trying to say here is, you made a comment earlier, you know, they could both likely choose one company. They could both likely choose two separate companies. And the condo group could choose, if there's eighty units, theoretically, there could be eighty different companies choosing, getting traction. I'm not saying it's gonna happen, but there is that possibility, but, correct?
I, I would imagine the condo association could do anything, but similar to Summit, they have, they have three different, they're fifteen houses, they have three different.
Okay, so in theory, you could have eighty different companies going in there.
That could be, yeah, Mr. Phil, I'm gonna see if he was...
No, because...
I can't finish.
In any condominium...
Oh.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to...
I thought you were gonna address your question. That's my fault, I ignored it.
In any condominium, yet individual owners do not have the rights that single-family homeowners have. It will be governed by the trustees, the man, the board of trustees of the...
And I said, and the board of trustees...
And they're not gonna allow the different, uh, uh, genders, you've a rubbish collection. It'll be, it'll be under the condo association, so, I mean, well, you know, again, I appreciate the discourse. We'll, we'll consider a real thing then, see what we can do, what we can...
Sorry, just made a comment that they're not gonna allow. We don't know that.
Yes, we do, because I have condo documents.
Hold on, please.
I can just tell you...
One, hold on, hold on, one at a time. I cut you off, because I thought you, I thought you were gonna stop going. So, he suggested, and said that it won't happen there, because he's drafting the condos, but you, anybody can do anything, in the, in the long, in the long future, something. Associations change, I understand what you're saying. But they're, but they're bound, like you said, by what's in the documents. So, document, condo doc can allow no, no, they can't do without X number of trustees voting. I think that's all Mr. Freeman was saying.
I totally agree, but what I'm saying is condo documents can be changed, you know?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. I've had a condo, yeah.
Theoretically, they can be changed. I could have numerous people there, that, that the choice was made, and voted on, and a few trustees and everything else, that there could be an issue with there being multiple trash pickups at that location with different companies. No one can tell me about the, the certainty that that cannot happen, okay?
I would think most unlikely, but nobody tries to say certainty, or anything can happen.
It's unlikely, but it can happen, okay? My next thing is, all of the traffic studies have been done. I would disagree that Tuesday from Thursday is the most normal traffic period for somebody that goes to the Boston every day. Mondays are really bad, Fridays are probably worse. So, I would disagree that Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday are the norm and that most people working at home from Monday, on Mondays and Fridays. The studies have been done, where the racetrack used to be, um, there's now this massive warehouse that I think at this point, nobody knows what's gonna happen with that, do we?
It'll be an eight one.
All right, so, we, we have, we have no idea what that's gonna be, and we have no idea what kind of traffic that is gonna generate. Is it gonna be eighteen-wheelers? Is it gonna be UPS trucks? Is it gonna be Amazon trucks? I don't think at this point we know, and I don't think the town knows, correct?
Well, I am a resident of town, I, as a resident of town, I have no idea what's gonna be there.
Okay, so, we have no idea really what kind of impact that's gonna have on traffic at that intersection, which is already pretty bad, correct?
I, I, I drive, I drive Route eighteen every single day to get to my office. I, I, I disagree with you. I think Tuesday's brutal. I think Tuesday, now Mondays, to be honest with you.
I think this is where you're going, perhaps.
I go north eighteen, every single day, every single day.
I'm just saying that, that we don't know what kind of impacts are becoming...
Absolutely, absolutely. Nobody does, and anywhere in town.
But when that, when that, when that party comes to propose a use, they are the ones that are gonna have to address whatever traffic ills might come with their, their project.
Has that already been decided with proposed uses for the property? I mean, somebody went in there and built a warehouse. Probably said, this is a warehouse, the proposal is a warehouse, and there's gonna be some type of traffic, and some type of trucks that have to be allowed to go in there. So, nobody built that not knowing that eighteen-wheelers for UPS trucks or Amazon trucks would easily get in there, otherwise it's pretty much UPS. So, has that already been decided, what the use is for that?
I have no idea. That's, that's, that's not, that's never been before us, and we can't base, this product's before us, it's, and it, that's, it doesn't even exist right now.
Oh, I, I totally understand, but I was just curious.
I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to be curious. I have no idea. I'm in the same...
Was that taken into, was that taken into account?
I'm in the same doubt that you are, because I have no idea what's going there. But again, it, that is not, believe it or not, it's not pertinent to what's here before us, because it doesn't exist today.
Oh, no, I understand, I was, I was...
Yeah, I know, I, I know you said.
I was talking...
But I do believe that, and, 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 and maybe, um, you know, Jeff can talk to this, when they do their trap, when they do their studies, they, they have a background or an increase sort of thing that, that you look at when you make your recommendations, right? You assume that, 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 that building is gonna happen, and, and, and traffic is gonna increase, right?
Correct, so, we do it in a two-step process. We contact the towns and the municipal, then we contact the town and regional planning for a background growth rate, for a growth rate that will increase regionally as a result of traffic that's independent of the development in front of the board. We also contact the town or neighboring towns about site-specific developments that will increase, that are specific to the actual roadway network that we're studying. And the project that's mentioned, I believe, is the two-eleven Highland Street project, that we did contact the town, we did receive the traffic study that was done by VHB for that study, and incorporated those volumes as part of our future projections, as part of the study.
Is that the study?
It is, it is.
All right, at that note, 'cause we have other business to attend to. Does, does either the applicant or are we gonna have anything else to add before we continue this? I, I, you did raise your hand, I told you I'd get back to you, sir. So, you, I'm gonna let you be the last speaker on this topic. You, you did raise your hand, and I said I'd get back to you, so, I, well, I forgot you, sorry.
Okay, I just have one more question on Winter Street. I know the gentleman said that, you mentioned...
I know the gentleman said that, did you mention?
Could you say your name again?
Rich Ferry, only on Sonic Drive.
Thank you, Summit Street.
The gentleman said that it's twenty-four feet. Now, supposing someone else from the town or the building department, I mean, the highway department goes down there and they find out that some places are only twenty-two feet, okay? And the road needs to be changed.
Hope they tell us.
Needs to be brought up to specs. Who's gonna pay for that? Is it town? Are we gonna have to pay for that to, to put this project in? Are we gonna have to put a whole brand new road in there?
Well, let me ask you a question. I mean, if it's, if it's not, at its best, even regardless of.
Doesn't sound like.
No, no, let me ask you, let me ask you a question. If it's not at its specs, and some people have said, and I don't disagree with the dog walk, I apologize, I forget your name. And let's say it's twenty-two feet. Regardless of if you have a project here or not, should, should the town have to do something? So are you willing, I'm asking if you will, he's gonna be the last question, I missed.
I wanna answer that. For, for me driving there, it's doable right now. I mean, it should be up to code.
Okay, that's all I'm asking.
But it's doable right now because there's only the few people that live in that neighborhood going back and forth. You don't have the eighty duplexes, that number of people on that road. You just have like a certain amount, amount of people that live in that area on there. I mean, everything should be up to code.
Yeah, that's my point, that's my point.
Okay, I agree. But right now, we can manage it because there's minimal amount of people. You're talking about doubling, tripling, whatever, that, that number of people.
Could you give your name here?
Mary Walsh.
Thank you, I saw.
Yeah, sorry.
Every time, because we do things the old-fashioned way.
Yeah, no, that's fine, I appreciate it.
All right, so the plan is that we're gonna meet on January eighth at, it's continued. So we've not, so it's gonna be an open meeting. January eighth at the high school, seven o'clock.
Mr. Scher, can you just do a motion?
Yeah, I, I can, I can take the motion. Motion by Jerry Second, by Greg, all in favor. So it's January, it'll be the only thing on you? No, we had that small thing. Yeah, so, so we're gonna put it off at seven o'clock. Seven fifteen, but we have a, we have a, we, we have other people in town we have to respond to. And someone filed an application for something. So seven fifteen at the high school. Hopefully we have some of the mic situation because this, I, I can't even hear half the people at the high school talk. So we're trying to fix that. And we'll see everybody there on that date. No, the fifteenth, no, we, no, the fifteen, we can't do, we can't do both. So we're doing the eighth and then the twelfth. Oh, February twelfth, yeah, so, yeah, what we'll do is continue at that meeting till the twelfth, till we have it on record. We just wanna give people the dates now. So I, I will say the February's gonna be at seven o'clock, okay? We don't, we don't. Right, so, so the, seven fifteen on the eighth of January at the high school. Seven fifteen, seven o'clock on February twelfth here. All right? Thanks.
Have a good night.